Everybody. I'd like to now declare the meeting of the first of February two thousand and twenty-three, Liverpool City Council officially open, and welcome everyone back to hopefully a very happy and prosperous two thousand and twenty-three for everybody. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with Council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum section, that this meeting is being livestreamed. To start today's proceedings, I would like to invite Reverend Bruce Hemmings from Liverpool Presbyterian Church, who will read out the prayer of council affirmation, as well as the acknowledgement country. Could I invite everybody to please stand?
Just as we begin, I'd like to remind council that we and many of the churches pray for you guys continually and for the work of council, and we want to support you any way that we can. Just one extra little thing, on the way walking here today, I met a lady from Iraq, from Baghdad, who was not well educated, her husband's not well educated, but she has three children who have grown up, and two have graduated from university, and the third is at university. And some of the opportunities that we are able to give people in this community really would be impossible if they were not living in Liverpool. And so, well done, you are part of something that is truly wonderful. We acknowledge that God having created the world and all that's in it, with respect, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land which we meet on and their ancestors, past and present. The Kabrungul clan of the Darug nation, I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by people of the Darawal and Daruk nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their background, race, or creed. We affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, the councillors, and staff at council, and all those associated with good government here in Liverpool. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the quality of life and freedom that we enjoy in Australia. We pray that we are past the trauma of Covid, and we are very thankful for those who have paid for the freedoms that we enjoy with our lives, and we continue to pray for those who serve in the Defence Forces, and for their families as they continue our proud tradition. Help us to be a healthy, multi-ethnic community, to have a unified culture, and as a nation to know peace and unity. Help us to enjoy and to reflect your great love for us. We thank you for our emergency services paid and volunteers. We pray for the people of Ukraine who have seen their cities completely destroyed, and with so much suffering in the world. We thank you that our nation has been so blessed by God, and for our strong Christian heritage, which makes this a home for so many from around the world who escape from a lack of freedom, from disease, and famine, and war. We pray for our Prime Minister Anthony Albanese, and opposition leader Peter Dutton, along with our Premier Dominic Perrotta, and opposition leader Chris Minns, and we pray for all who serve with them in government and opposition. We pray for the upcoming state election, that it will give us good and stable, strong and effective government for years to come. Father, we thank you for the city of Liverpool and its long Christian heritage. We thank you for those who have in recent decades have made this a home to live in from various parts of the world, who find safety and security, and share in the Aussie way of life. We pray everyone who moves here may find blessing that you give, and know your divine hand of blessing in their lives. We pray everyone who makes this nation and this city their home may find healing from the past and hope for the future. We pray also for our council, our mayor Ned Munne, for our councillors, and the many hard-working men and women who provide the many services which keep our city functioning. We pray for unity and peace among everyone who works and lives in our city, and we trust you to continue to bless our community well into the future. Bless this meeting, bless all who speak, may they be clear and confident and desire what is good for our community. Father, we thank you for our past, trust your wisdom and guidance for our present, and commit ourselves to you for our future, in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Could I ask everyone to please stay standing for the National Anthem?
Australians, all let us rejoice, for we are one and free. We've golden soil and wealth for tall, our home is good by sea. Our land abounds in nature's gifts of beauty, rich and rare. In history's page, let every stage advance Australia fair. Enjoy the strains that let us sing, advance Australia fair. Beneath the radiant southern cross, we'll toll with hearts and hands to make this calm the wealth of us, renowned of all the lands. For those who've come across the seas, we've found lots of place to share. With courage, let us all combine to advance Australia fair. Enjoy the strains that let us sing, advance Australia fair.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And once again, Reverend, thank you very much for your very kind words, and on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you for your well wishes to Liverpool and the council and its people, so, thank you. Thank you. Thankfully, we have everyone attending here, and we have no apologies nor any condolences. Our next item on the agenda is the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the fourth of December.
Love the minute.
Move, councillor Rhodes, second deputy mayor. Any objections? Put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Are there any declarations of interest?
Yes, Conf zero four for Charles Street. Non-procurnary significant, and I'll be leaving the chambers.
Yeah, I've got two, Mr Mayor. Conf zero three. Non-procurnary, in my opinion, it's significant. I'm the president of the Australian Islamic House, I will leave the chamber. And conf zero four, it's non-procurnary, less than significant. The applicants are a friend of mine, but I will leave the chamber as well. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, I have a declaration as well.
Yes.
It's a non-financial non-procurnary interest, less than significant. It's in relation to item fifty-nine on page two forty-five of the confidential report. I used to be a board member of the Australian Islamic House up until, I think it was September last year.
And likewise, I have the same on conf zero four as councillor Goodman does, and I'll also be leaving the chambers, and we'll fill out the form appropriately. If I can please ask that to get a copy of the forms?
Mr Mayor, I've got one as well.
Yes.
The Australian Islamic House, I serve as the public officer for the organisation. Non-procurnary, non-significant, I'll remain in the chamber.
Yep. Thank you. We have nothing in the public forum, so we'll now move on to representations. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite Ms Hayley Prenter, who would like to speak on item nom zero-two, Medicare psychology services. Ms Prenter, please make yourself wait. Thank you for your presentation and your time to join us here today. We'll now move into the agenda. First item is CEO zero-one, page fifty-eight, tab one, with the recommendation on page fifty-eight. Move councillor Harrell. Second councillor Rhodes, any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried, unanimous. Next item is Plan zero-one, page sixty-four, tab two, with the recommendation on page sixty-five. Move deputy mayor. Seconded.
Yes, with some questions.
Councillor Rhodes, yes councillor.
Um, yes, I'm happy to second this motion, but my question is, we understand the growth and affordable housing in established areas like our greenfield, in our greenfield areas, rather. It's in our established areas that I have question marks, and I don't know whether this is being considered in this actual panel, the Western Planning Partnership. But the way that I see it is that we're doing a lot to increase the affordability of housing in Liverpool and in these brown belt areas as well, where we're making blocks smaller, so we're doubling the population. And we know that there is a push to approve the affordable housing in these places, such as boarding houses and other such measures, all of which increase the population in our brownfield areas. Now, the actual infrastructure that was built into these areas initially was designed for a population that they expected, and didn't even probably perceive that one day it would be needed for an ever-increasing population. When we actually approve the developments for all these developments which is increasing the population, we do it on a single block-by-block basis most of the time, and because we do it that way, it's not really noted that, well, we're actually putting extra pressure, or possibly putting extra pressure, on the infrastructure that wasn't built when you look at the accumulation of developments that we're developing in that area. So I just needed to say that, so that that might be considered in the Western Planning Partnership, as well as the green belt areas. So, yeah, really, my question is that is it being addressed by the Western Sydney Regional Affordable Housing Strategy, and if we could have a report back on that in whatever is happening?
Would you like a response now, or are you happy to get a report back?
Um, well, is it possible that we just...
No, your concerns?
I would like a report back on it, so can we add it as a motion? I'll move a motion.
Yeah, I'll refer to the CEO.
Councillor, to indicate this, your concerns will definitely be brought to their attention. What is good about this is that, you know, for that payment of the ten thousand dollars, we will have an opportunity to work with them. We will bring not only your concerns, but quite a number of other concerns to their attention. We will ask them to take that into account. We're of course not bound by any recommendations they make. My suggestion would be, let us do, work with them, let's await their report, and then I will bring that to you, to council, so that we can consider their report and any further action you want to take.
I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Fantastic. Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declared unanimous. Next item is Plan zero-two, page seventy-nine, tab three, with the recommendation on page eighty.
I have a couple of questions, and perhaps I can just ask them first. But I'll move the motion to...
Moved. You have a second, or? Councillor Moon?
Yep.
Go for it, councillor Rhodes.
Um, I note that on page eighty-three of the process that we're going through to get the feedback from the community, residents who do not return forms that we hand out hold an opinion that they have no objection to it. I think that's a step too far, considering our very multicultural nature, and some people may not even be able to read the form. So I just wondered if there was more that we might be able to do to that. We do hold public forums or district forums, if we could promote it in that for a series of time. I think that you've got to give the citizens of Liverpool the opportunity, if they have problems with English, to understand what is being said to them. And so that is one question. Will I... Will I go on?
Do I refer that to the CEO?
Look, thank you. Can I indicate before I answer that, is that in addition to the recommendation on page eighty, there is a second recommendation to be added, and that second recommendation is that information on available truck parking in industrial areas to be included on council's website. I'll refer to the acting director, Lena, to answer your question. Please, Lena.
Through the CEO, thank you for your question, councillor. We can certainly undertake some promotion and forward communication on targeting different platforms for people who may not be in a position to understand and respond to our letters. I'll also undertake an audit to confirm that we do attach our interpretation, you know, links and services on our letters, which we typically do on most of our correspondence. So that's a pathway into obtaining a resource where you can get some interpretation for your written correspondence. So we could potentially make an amendment to the point about promoting on our website truck parking, as well as the process for parking permits.
Yes, I didn't bring up truck parking, I was talking generally about making sure that we do gather the whole of Liverpool's opinion about it. Parking is a very hot topic, and just presuming that you haven't received it back is giving you, is affirmative that they agree with the parking policy. I think that's a stretch too far.
And we're always open for discussion, even after the fact, so after the window period, we're happy to always engage with our community.
Can I, is the mover and secondor happy with that extra point two?
Uh, extra point two, page...
Page eighty. I'm happy to read it again.
No, it's on the screen. Is that a... A secondor happy? Can I recommend a point three to be included in this, that we investigate potential opportunities for hard-stand parking in Rossmore as part of this? And the reason that is, so, if everyone, when we look at our LEP, you know, Rossmore effectively is an area that is untouched and is basically going to be stuck for another ten, twenty years. We have Austro that's redeveloping, we have a lot of trucks that need somewhere to go. It'd be a shame for people not to be able to park, you know, whether one or three or five trucks on a five-acre block of land, subject to the right environmental concerns being taken consideration. But I think it's a, as a temporary use of land, it's worthwhile investigating. Or surrounding areas, so, yeah, yeah, rural areas.
Can we add an extra point or to that, and that is the second depot of council which currently isn't being used?
Yeah, and the...
And look at that as the same opportunity.
Is the mover and secondor happy with that point? Great. Councillor Green?
I had a question.
Yes.
Do we actually know how many trucks are parking illegally in residential streets across Liverpool? I mean, in terms of, you know, like, I'm not, the idea of Rossmore is a great idea, do we know what the capacity will be in terms of, you know, has there ever been an audit of trucks that are parked in residential areas?
Councillor, I'm happy to take that on notice, and let me come back to you. I'd rather get an exact figure, rather than try and ascertain one through the directors at the moment.
Councillor Haggerty?
Yeah, just in point three, can we, that we include potential opportunities, well, we'll just include something about community consultation in there, so that the residents of Rossmore are consulted on that. Sounds like a common sense solution, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think step number one is work out the legalities, and whether it can be, what can be, what it looks like, you know. At the same time, we're not doing anything, because we're not saying do anything.
Oh, just on point three, though, on...
Yeah, but I'm saying point three is investigate whether it actually can happen. What is it? Because if, I'm just saying, if we went out to the community and said, oh, if we park some, we might park some trucks, I think that's probably the next stage.
Okay.
Like, let's see if we're going to establish it.
Well, do you believe because of the zoning of the area?
Yeah. Yeah, it's potentially a zoning issue, a DCP issue, there, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot that would have to go through it. So, you know, if we can understand what that mechanism, if it's available to us, then I think comes the point of the, point to come back to council, and if we're happy with it, I think that's the point we start talking about, well, let's see what the community's views are before we go anything further down the track.
My other question, if I can go to that now, was how these actual permits are going to be given out. I have concern over little shopping centres that we have along the Hume Highway, where there is possibly about six businesses, and there's never been enough parking provided in those areas for the six business owners, considering that they would be getting two permits supposedly. So you've already got twelve parking spaces, and there's very little parking space, might be a couple of parking spaces left for any customers to attend their business. Can council give me a response on that, as how that would be dealt with?
Yeah. I think, to the CEO.
Through the CEO, council can't issue parking permits within business premises. I would suggest that for each individual business, the strata complex maybe decides on reserving some parking for staff. We can't issue permits because business premises rely on that turnover of vehicles to ensure that the stimulation of the business. So my suggestion would be for these commercial complexes that they engage with the strata and decide on some other parking arrangements for the staff members. So just confirm the parking permits are in residential areas for cars.
Not in business, as such as this. Okay, thank you.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declared unanimous. Next item is Plan zero-three, page one twenty-five, tab four, with the recommendation on page one twenty-five. I'll move the motion. Secondor, second councillor McNair, any discussion? Put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Next item is Corp zero-one, page one thirty, tab five, one thirty-two. I'm happy to move the motion with a slight alteration to it, and that is that we start the committees in March, and that we temporarily, that the CEO is the delegate, or, I'm just looking for the exact wording. The non, the CEO is a non-voting until, a non-voting member until the subject matter expert is recruited.
So, just to, if I may, through the CEO, just some...
Just before you do that, do I have a secondor?
Can we try to have them...
Is that councillor Haggerty? Did you second it? Oh, you said something. I don't know.
Can we try to have them on Tuesdays instead of Wednesdays?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm happy, and on Tuesdays. Yes, please. Right. You second it, councillor Goodman? All right, great.
Just a question.
Just a couple of questions, you can go first, councillor.
So by my count, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen committees? And the purpose of this review was to reduce the amount of committees?
He's counting the community committees.
Refer to the CEO.
Yeah, and our director, just to explain the duties and the number of committees.
I'm not sure if I heard the question clearly, sorry, CEO.
Well, it's more like a statement, actually, or was there actually a question?
That was a question. Do we, by my count, do we have thirteen committees? Is that correct?
We have twelve community committees.
Yep.
Which are listed on page one thirty-two, the bottom of page one thirty-two.
Yep. Yep, listed there. And then does that include the four strategic committees?
No. Six strategic committees. Does that include the six on there?
No, include the strategic committees, no. There will be four strategic committees with Eric.
Okay, so what are we up to, seventeen, eighteen? Something like that?
And it doesn't include external committees either?
Yeah. Look, yeah, it's a decision for council, but I just note that the original purpose of this review was to reduce the amount of committees, and I don't know if we've been successful, so, that might be a question, it might be speaking against, I'm not sure.
Mr Mayor, if I could indicate, so what you now have very clearly is six, and only six, governance committees, which are clearly outlined there, which are in accordance with the resolution that was passed in October twenty-two. That is now being adopted, if it passed today. However, in addition to that, a number of the community committees that did exist were no longer required, because the work will be done within the governance committee, but you still have twelve community committees which are outlined there. So that's the situation, and happy to refer it to Tina, if you have anything further to add.
Thank you. Through the CEO, the October resolution councillors at that point wanted us to retain the community committees as is, while we undergo the start of the six T1 committees, with a further review to undergo, once those committees are established and working. We understand that there is still twelve, we will able to amalgamate based on the existing of the six, but there would be further work around reviewing the twelve committees of council, but that ultimately will be your decision. We will bring the data to you, and the, and once we've start the six, and we'll bring further data to the councillors, and ultimately you can make a decision whether we reduce even further, which would be our recommendation.
May I have a question?
Sorry, I'm just confirming something, Mr Mayor.
Just, just before, so, just on the point of, I think point two, the governance committees will convene once a month on a Tuesday, not being the day of the council meeting. All right, that's cool. Sorry, yes, councillor Caliander?
Yeah, in the report on page one thirty-five, it states that there's no cost associated with the report, but what is the cost associated with, I guess, having... having such a broad range of committees, plus the governance committees on top? I know you've outlined potential sitting fees if there are subject matter experts, but I know one of the reasons why we did undertake a review of the committees was to also consider staff time and staff resources as, as to whether or not they were the most effectively used in this kind of way.
Thank you. I'll... The, the extra cost would be the subject matter experts, depending on whether we can get one subject matter expert to cover all committees, or whether we need more than one for different committees, the cost would range between about twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars over a year.
Per expert, or?
For all of them, in total, for the year, twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Sorry.
So can the councillor turn off their microphones, please?
Sorry, can I just go back to the second part of my question, which was, does what the report outlines in front of us consider whether this is the most effective use of staff, staff time and resources in, in bringing us this structure?
Yeah, thank you. I'll just answer that briefly, then ask the director to continue with it. Again, to remind councillors that there was the resolution of October twenty-two adopting this new governance committee and community committees model. In doing so, all of the indications at this stage to me is that the time previously being required, effort, staff hours, et cetera, councillors attending, there won't be a great change in that. But again, once the model commences, it is still open for council to give consideration in relation to the number of community committees, and whether there is a possibility of some of those community committees being merged, so that you take it down from what you have to far less committees, but still dealing with the same topic, again, reducing the number of times councillors and committee. But at this stage, this report is responding to the resolution of this council that was passed in October. I'll put you on to, Tina, you have anything further? Okay, that's the situation.
Um, I'll speak for the motion, if I may.
I have a question before you speak to the motion, mate.
What's that, sorry?
Yeah, I've got a question before she speaks.
I'll get to you in a moment. I'll get to you in a moment, deputy mayor. Sorry.
Okay, am I, all right. I note that we delayed, um, considering the community committees until this was considered altogether, and I've got some issues about that, that we, normally every 12 months, we look at the people who are elected to represent those committees, that hasn't been done. Um, and in saying that, uh, I do support that we do keep all those community committees. We are a community-centric council. This is what we have stated ourselves as being, and I think it would send a very wrong message to the community if we were to start to remove these community committee meetings. In saying that, um, uh, I'm happy to maintain the committees that I am on. I'd also like to be included on the heritage committee, and I would like to be given back my permission, uh, my, uh, my representation on the Eric committee. Now, the reason why I would like that is because...
Councillor Rhodes, just before you go down that path, um, if I can, through the CEO, ask the, so councillor Rhodes makes a good point that we defer the election to different committees. We have been deferring that particularly to these community ones. Can I ask when, when will we do that? Because especially things like West Rock, we still don't have any active people.
I definitely need another person on West Rock.
So councillor, my intention is this, if this is passed today, we will immediately start working and we will be confirmed with councillors to ascertain the membership of the various committees. Um, I will at the outset be the independent expert that sits on all of these committees until we go through. So it would be within a very short period of time.
I'm talking about the community committees.
Yes. Do you wanna, I guess we have two options, if you want to do it now, or we do it, or we do it at the next council meeting.
Well, I think that we should do it now, as was resolved from the last council meeting.
From the last round?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we have the Aboriginal consultative committee.
Yep, just, so just hold on a second. Deputy mayor, you had your, your question, sorry?
Yes, thanks, thanks, Mr Mayor. Well, through the CEO question, to Director Corporate Services, Mr Portili, uh, on the executive summary, point number two, it says this committee will be on a monthly basis on the same day. So I've got six committee will be having the meeting on the same day. If you take into consideration the audit and risk committee, it takes up to three hours by itself. So how we can manage to have six committees, an average of two hours each, plus the break between the meetings, so how, how you, how we can achieve that?
My, my understanding, what I, um, yep, my, my understanding is Eric is still gonna meet on a quarterly basis. That's one of my discussions with Mr Hamperes today, in researching this report.
It's my understanding, as I read here, it's on monthly basis, all the committee. That's point two. I repeat, these committees will be on a monthly basis on the same day. Point number two.
Through you, through CEO, that the resolution says either month on, month on the same day of the council meeting or every second Wednesday of every month.
Yep, so if you look at table A on page 135 of the report, it says the, the frequency of the meeting, so Aboriginal consultant meeting quarterly, the Eric meeting is quarterly, quarterly, but it's been elevated to a government's, government's committee here. So Eric will still sit separately as a quarterly meeting.
No, no.
Uh, well, I guess you could, technically, yeah, you're probably right. Yeah, technically, you're right. Yeah, so...
Through you, through you, Mr CEO, sorry, Mr Mayor, the, the Eric, whilst it'll form under the umbrella of the, of this charter, has its own charter.
Yep.
So it will maintain, uh, its process through its own charter.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, to the deputy mayor's point, if you read it, it says it's because Eric is now a governance committee, and it says all governance committees will meet on that day. So I think if we maybe just add on, add wording saying except Eric.
But this is part.
In the point two.
And the whole part, if you're gonna have to get it all on the same day.
Can you put your microphone on, please?
And in regard of the other five committees, if you're gonna have to have all the committees on, you know?
Yep.
Same day, so an average of two hours for everyone, okay? An average, yeah, well, say one half hour. Times five, seven and a half hours, and the break between the committees, you're talking about 10 hours. How we can achieve that?
Well, let's see how it goes, test it out, and then we'll go from there. I think the whole point is it's a trial. We did it before, you mean? Our CEO, I think, is doing 14 hours a day, so he's, uh, that's only half the day for him.
Okay, no more arguing about it?
Right?
Could I just, could I just, potentially, could we add one more point?
Yeah.
Um, I understand the, um, that we resolved to, to do these six committees first and then the community committees later.
Yep.
Um, with the new reporting structure of the community committees into these governance committees, can we have a timeframe though on when we're going to assess the, the success of that and reexamine those community committees? And should it be in perhaps three months, six months? I'm not sure, but I'd like a timeframe put in there so that we do come back.
Yeah, I've been advised it'll be three months.
Three months?
Three months.
Please.
Yep. Councillor Hall?
Yes, could I suggest, given the complexity of this, that we actually defer this to an extensive briefing session? I don't feel comfortable in this at all. Uh, I remember the last time we debated this and had a briefing session, uh, and I think the, the, the objectivity of this whole thing has changed since then, and I must admit, reading through this, I'm not comfortable with it. I would prefer that we have a briefing session where we can all attend and ask the relevant questions and, and we, we are explained exactly how these committees work. At the moment, I'm not sure.
Are you moving a deferral, councillor?
I'm happy to move it on the basis, I would suggest that, you know, if it passes, yes, I'm happy to move a deferment to the next meeting.
Well, that would be a, um, foreshadowed motion. Do you have a seconder? Second to councillor Green. Is there any further discussion? And just adding, so if we just add a point, another point that we, should the motion be successful, that we, um, appoint councillors to the community committees as per their charters immediately?
Can I request that when this does come to a briefing, that we get some data on attendance at the community committees? Uh, I know there has been previously, some sort of data made available, but I think it would be useful to understand what the attendance is like and, and whether the engagement in these committees is actually what we want it to be.
Yep, can we add that to the point 10, please? That the data about attendance be provided as part of point 10? Now, um, in the, my right of reply, councillor, I, I think this is a very good, uh, efficiency measure for council, as well as getting significant improvement in governance. Uh, you know, our priority needs ultimately be the assets of this community, um, and that's the financial assets and physical assets. Um, we need to have our strong focus on governance, and I think this structure, uh, community structure does that, and I want to thank all the staff involved. Uh, I know there's been, they've been going through this for months and months to ensure that it's, um, uh, that we have a best practice model. It's not going to be perfect, I'm sure we're, we're gonna find numerous things, as was mentioned in here, but I think this is a very good investment, getting the subject matter experts as well. Um, I think that's gonna be refreshing. I think we, for those of us who sit on, who, who have gone to an Eric meeting, having a fresh set of eyes outside of the staff, outside of the councillors, provides a valuable input, and I think bringing this level to the governance committees is a, is a positive, is a positive thing. Um, uh, we've been a year into our term, um, you know, we, and I think that we are deferring, I think we've gone through this, I don't think there's any point to defer this, let's get this on, let's meet next month, let's get this going, um, and do what our community wants us to do. So that being said, I'll put forward the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands.
Sorry, can we just go up and read it, please? Yeah.
It's what's in the agenda.
Well, the one in the agenda asks us to determine certain things.
And we've added in point nine, and that should this motion be successful, we address the people who are represented...
That's, that's in point 11. Point 11, yep. Yep, so we'll do that afterwards, so this motion be successful. Yep.
Um, we've got, in those committee meetings...
Microphone, please.
In those committee meetings, there is no mention of, um, the Eric, uh, no, the Eric's there, West Rock, and the Riverkeeper. The Riverkeeper meeting is still going?
Yeah, they're the external committees.
External committees.
Yep, but we can do them, we can do them now as point. Community committees, do we have a list of the external committees that we can bring up quickly? Yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
But we've got...
No, but this, West Rock has vacancies, so this, to councillor Rhodes' point. So we can, what we can do, I'll just add, if I can add with the indulgence of the seconder of the motion, that we not, in point 11, after, uh, community committees, we also want external committees. Is a seconder happy with that? Was it councillor, was it councillor Goodman? Great. All right. All right, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion carried. All right, we'll now proceed to appoint people onto the committees. Um, any representatives, uh, I'll go through one by one. Aboriginal consultative committee, councillor Green. Any other councillor?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, is there any chance, I know this is on the fly, but we could get a, um, summary of when these committees meet? Because off the top of my head, I can't think when each one meets.
We've got in table A when it says the frequency, but not the dates.
So, Tuesday, uh, Tuesday is my...
I see, I know we have a...
To councillor McNaul, um, if it's, if everyone's accounts, we, we can do that, but if we do it at the end of the meeting, that way the staff can get that for us and we can do it properly.
That's, that'd be great, thank you.
And have that, if everyone's happy with that? All right.
But just a question, Mr Mayor, I, I believe in September, we appointed chairpersons for each committee, so what are we doing now?
No, we didn't. No, we didn't, we deferred that.
We kept it as is.
Yeah.
So why are we changing now?
Because there are positions empty and, uh, yes, we, we need to reexamine it. Some people may not be able to attend these meetings because of extra commitments that they're suddenly involved in.
Well, I don't mind, but...
Thank you. Yeah, that's right. All right, we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, which is on page, uh, Corp 02 Investment Report for December, page 155, tab 6, with the recommendation on page 156.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor Rhodes, second to councillor Hagerty, any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, I declare that carried. Uh, next item is committee reports, page 167, tab 7, 17.
Happy to move that. Can we move the committee reports as a whole?
It's only one.
There's only one, only one. So yes.
I said, can we move them as a whole?
Move councillor Caliander, second to councillor Rhodes.
Uh, I, I do have a point to pull out of that strategic meeting, if I may. Uh, the point is that, um, uh, there was a request in that strategic meeting for Transport New South Wales, the traffic modelling for Liverpool. I know we are still trying to get it, we haven't got it at this stage. I was wondering if we could put that request into the register of matters requiring further reports to council, so that we don't lose sight of that and can keep on the tail of Transport New South Wales until we have actually received that, uh, traffic modelling that they, they have got and has, have not given to council despite our request for it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, George is, uh, making a very good note of that. Thank you.
Thank you, that was my only point.
Wonderful, okay. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, I declare it carried. Questions with notice? Page 175, page 175, tab 8, councillor Hagerty?
Yep, happy with that. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Green, question with notice two, page 177, yep. Uh, councillor Caliander, question three, 179.
I, I have some follow-up questions, if I may. Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
Um, so the response to question four, um, that seems like quite a low budget for emergency works and minor capital works, especially given the sort of incredibly reactive nature of a lot of the, the work that, um, council's been forced to do in the last three years. Um, it, is there data on how we assess whether this is enough or, you know, um, what flow and effects this has on the timeliness of repairs that's, and, and maintenance that's been made? How do we, you know, how do we actually make sure that we're just not budgeting the same amount every year, um, and then leaving community organisations high and dry when they need maintenance?
I'll ask the director to respond to that, to the budget. Look, councillor, uh, before a council is, is permitted to undertake works, it has to have a budget to fund those works. Uh, there is, there is a budget for maintenance works and the dollar spend is provided in this report. Um, if, uh, if those funds are available, obviously those works will be done. If they're emergencies, um, obviously they can be done and the budget re-looked at, but, but generally, um, unless it's of a, an emergency nature, uh, the money, the budget has to be put before the works can be undertaken.
I understand my question is more as to how council assesses whether the emergency budget allocation is enough, um, given the amount of requests that might come through and the nature of, of our facility. So we do have a number of, of facilities that are approaching the end of their lifespan, which might necessitate emergency works, um, and so a budget of under $10,000 for emergency works and under $50,000 for capital is quite low, especially given the rising cost of materials and, and labour.
Councillor, can I, 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 I'll put you on to the acting director in a moment, but can I also indicate that question four relates very specifically to emergency unexpected, and we're indicating that if it's emergency works under 10, that's allocated in a particular budget that we hold and we have sufficient funds. Anything above that is dealt with in relation to other funds, et cetera. Um, I'll ask the acting director to respond in relation to that.
Um, through the CEO, uh, thank you councillor for the question. So just to clarify and to reiterate, reiterate John's comments just then, so these dollar figures are the size of the job, not so much the budget allocated to that type of work. So less than $10,000 is the size of the work and less than $50,000 is the size of the work, and that's how they sort of identify whether it's emergency or capital and that sort of stuff. But in terms of your, the part of your question about, uh, forward programming and, and budget allocations for buildings and facilities going forward, considering, you know, the, the growth in council and whatnot, so council undertakes, um, regular audits and condition assessments of all of our assets, including buildings, um, along with transport and infrastructure type assets as well. And based on the information, we develop long-term programmes, uh, with the allocated funding and required funding, uh, over the 10-year period to sort of, uh, guide programme of works down to sort of the, the detail in the DP and OP. Um, that can fluctuate from year to year, and also depends on the long-term financial plan as well, the, the amount of funding available, uh, working with the other directorates as well, INE, city presentation and the like, to identify priorities, uh, and that's how those programmes and budgets get developed for all of our assets. Yep.
I, I have a question on the same matter.
One second. Councillor Caliander?
Thank you, John, I appreciate your, your response. I actually clarified, um, uh, something for me, um, but I guess in terms of, um, whether or not the, that process is meeting the desired outcomes in terms of community facilities and, and the ability of our local organisations to use them, how much, um, input do we have from other parts of council? Because the worst thing would be for, um, obviously such decisions to be made in a silo. So how do we make sure that we're actually getting it right and that, you know, we're not missing anything in that process?
Yeah, I'll just refer to the CEO. Thank you.
Uh, thank you councillor. A councillor, as you know, when we come to council with the budget, which includes many of these projects, you know, I like to use the word depreciation of asset projects, what we anticipate, maintenance, et cetera, it comes through. If something drastically changes in relation to that, then we would actually come back to council and seek a variation of that budget to meet those expenses, that's one. If I take an example of a drastic change of potholes as a result of the extraordinary heavy rain, the reality is that wasn't in its entirety budgeted, a fair portion was, but it has exceeded, and we are approaching the state government in those situation because of grants now being made available to, by the state government to assist us to obtain more funding, securing more funding, and my understanding is we've obtained, uh, some funding or about to obtain some funding. So these are the things that, you know, it's, it's a moving situation, if I can use... So these are the things that, you know, it's a moving situation, if I can use that expression, it's not locked into concrete. We do have to continue to look at it, vary it, monitor it. And if we believe that sufficient funds are not there in reserve, then we seek other funds. And if we have to come to council, we come to council to seek the budget being altered. Yeah, and of course we do quarterly reviews, as I'm reminded by the director.
I have a question. In regards to point 1 in councillor Caliander's question, I note that from the register of matters pertaining to reports to council, which was recently distributed to councillors, it shows in item 5 of that report, on the resolution of council, 2nd of February 2022, improving our parks for residents, that a further report is due in March this year that will include a comprehensive operational review that is in due on March 1st. So that's next month. My question is, is that report still coming to council and will that add greater clarity? Not about the urgency of the matters in some instances, but certainly in reference to point 1, it would certainly add some clarity.
If I can just say, I think councillors, I think this is a, it's a very good discussion that once, as soon as we move into the budget process, which I imagine is going to be very soon, that this is when we have these detailed discussions, because once again, it's what our community wants, so I think this is the best time to deal with it in detail.
Well, I ask the council again, are we to receive a report in March as in accordance with the...
Which page is that on?
It's on, it's item number 5, and I'll find it for you.
5 of the agenda, or?
No, not on the agenda. It's on the register of matters requiring further reports to council. You distributed this to councillors through the CEO's report to councillors. And item 5, which is on the second page, is relating very much to these issues that councillor Caliander had...
I don't, I don't think we have it with us here, but I'm sure if they've said it, it's going to happen in March, I'm sure it's going to happen in March.
Let me take it on notice, I'll have a go.
Thank you.
We're actually going through all of that, so I just don't have it on the top of my head at the moment.
Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, while we're on the topic of urgent repairs, I was out visiting the wonderful Austral Soccer Club on the weekend, and they did put in a request a few months ago about some repairs that they need. So hot water system's not working, the fence is damaged, the lighting's not working, there is trees obstructing the lights, there's missing padlocks, the gutters are blocked and the roof is partially collapsing. Can I get an update on that, please? We can take it on notice, but if we can get an update on that one?
Happy to take it on notice and we'll come back to you.
On that note, if we're asking things on notice, can I also ask on notice the status of the letter of, I think, permission? So the Liverpool Olympic Football Club have received a grant for $30,000 to upgrade their electricity infrastructure, and they require a letter of cooperation from council in order to do that. So can I get an update on the status?
Again, take that on notice.
And whilst we're on the topic, can I also include Blaine Field Oval, where also the people who are operating from the facilities there are putting in for a sports grant, hopefully from the clubs, we'll see how that goes. And they also need a letter.
Can I urge the councillors on these very important matters just to send the emails through? I think it helps provide some more clarity and help us...
Mr Mayor, in regard of the requests put by my colleagues, Nathan, can we have an update on our premises situations now?
On what, sorry?
On our, on all our premises.
All our premises?
All our premises, any issues, any problem.
That's not a, that's not a five-minute job, that probably needs like three to four months, I imagine.
And that's why I asked.
Excuse me councillor, I'm still, I'm still talking. I'm sorry about that. Mate, we're giving you another 30 days just to have a response in regard of our premises issues, you know? It seems to me, Whitleam Centre have an issue, Miller have an issue, and other community centres have an issue. If we have a list of issues, then we can prioritize, you know?
Oh, the, the, the list is easy, that's not a problem. The list can be a pretty big list, so you just got to find the money from somewhere, councillors. So, you mean? Pick what, choose, pick, pick where you want to get the money from.
But doesn't matter, small or big, large, doesn't matter. Just amend your request to have a list of all our premises issues to deal with it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr councillor Haddid, that's the point I'm trying to raise. It's a previous motion in this council, resolved by this council, which councillors told us that they're having that report that would cover all those issues that the good councillor has raised. Simple. It's already been done, it's resolved by council, councillors agreed to give the report back to us.
Thank you councillor, I was going to indicate to the deputy mayor, I took that to be exactly what councillor raised earlier and I said I will look at that, I will get back to you on that. Can I also remind all councillors that the budget will be coming literally in four months and quite a bit of the work you're suggesting is undertaken for that budget and we will be able to come back to you with that as well.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Mr CEO.
I can't hear you, sorry.
I only put this request for simple reason, because I don't want every meeting some councillors going, look, we have issue on this community centre, we have issue in Whitleam Centre, you know, just list it all and we'll look at it and we prioritize our...
Can I just make one further point? I believe that this, this document, the register of matters requiring further reports to council, I don't know who put together, but thank you, it is a marvellous report. It allows councillors to go through it, see what has been raised before that hasn't been addressed, and we can have, we know when they're going to bring it to council. The question is, will they be bringing it to council?
I think you, you, you can refer that place to Mr Georg Rokas and his lovely team there, Susan and the team, so.
Well done.
Thank you, everyone. Our next item is NOM 01, 10th anniversary of Montenegro Park?
Yes.
Councillor Hagerty?
In the spirit of good food...
Very important and good motion here, councillor Hagerty.
In the spirit of good multicultural food. Mr Mayor, you yourself opened this wonderful park 10 years ago.
Yes, indeed.
I'd like to second that as well, Mr Mayor. I'll second that as well.
Mover second, yes? Yes.
I was approached by representatives of the Montenegrin community who want to commemorate it with a small little gesture of the Montenegrin and the Australian community, so little barbecue, plant an olive tree to represent Montenegro, plant a yuglyptus tree, very symbolic, think it'll be a great day. Just putting that one forward.
Done. I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Unanimous.
Wow.
NOM 2, 183, page 12, recommendation on page 183, councillor McNaul?
Move that way.
Happy to second that with a second point, please.
Yes councillor?
That we formally write to the presenter, Ms Pratton, to thank her for her continuous advocacy on this matter for our local community.
No, sounds good. Is this mover happy with that?
I'm happy with that.
I have a foreshadowed motion.
I have a question when we're ready.
Yeah, once. Yes councillor Green?
It should be coming up on the screen. I think take this as an opportunity to address the lack of mental health services in Liverpool in our community. I'd like to, council to make representation to both the federal and state governments to work cooperatively and collaboratively as a matter of urgency to strengthen, improve and invest in accessible, community-based mental and psychological health counselling and therapy that is sensitive to and meets the needs, the complex needs of our diverse community, and to write and make representation to state and federal government to urgently implement the findings of the Mental Health Services Accessibility Report of the University of Western Sydney, University of Sydney and University of Wollongong, to fund the development of more community-based psychosocial primary and community mental health services as alternatives to hospital care, and to invest in boosting the role and capacity of NGOs and other service providers to provide more comprehensive, integrated, higher-level mental health services.
I'll second that, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm just looking at this motion and comparing it to the motion moved by councillor McNaul. Whilst they're talking about mental health, there's a significant difference between the two motions, and I don't, I don't see this as even as directly related to the first motion. And my inclination would be that this would need to be moved more as an urgency motion or as a separate motion. And I say that because councillor McNaul's motion deals directly with Medicare, right? So it's like a, it's a clear sort of policy issue that's happened versus a, what yours is, and it's a good motion, but it's more, it's very, it's much, much, much more broad.
I understand that, can I explain something a bit further on why?
Yep.
And I do commend councillor McNaul for bringing this motion to the floor. The issue raises, the issue that's raised of access to Medicare psychological services actually falls short in addressing the unmet needs for psychological care, support and counselling in our community. The shortfall of mental health care services in Liverpool is longstanding, with early intervention access and equity identified as critical problems. The Royal Australian and New Zealand College of Psychiatrists, New South Wales branch, amongst many others, at the recent Upper House Inquiry, report number 55, said South West Sydney is starting from a position where it is under-resourced for community health services. The issue of lack of access also raises particular complexities that contribute to the much broader problem of lack of accessibility to affordable mental health care and supports. Liverpool, if I can have your attention, Liver, sorry, Liverpool has one of the lowest uptakes of private health insurance, and the out-of-pocket charges in gap fees of the Better Access Programme is currently sitting at $90. And I think for me, that's why the access to Medicare-funded service is actually, it does, it doesn't, it's not fit for purpose for our community, when you consider that Liverpool has higher rates of mental health issues linked to trauma, resettlement issues, domestic violence and socio-economic disadvantage. Our cultural diversity of our community presents specific complexity in accessing services and issues with cultural beliefs and stigma, and they're less likely to access private psychologists. So that's why I'm arguing that we are at a, as a growth council, and in recognising that and getting on to both the state and federal agenda, that what we're missing is the middle, the missing middle in, in, in services. And your access to mental health services, to psychological services should not rest on your postcode or your ability to pay. And under the access to better health, unfortunately, the highest intake, up to 60% of uptake, was in higher income areas. The, the issue is that in lower income areas, it was much, much lower. And therefore, in our community, our socio-economic issues are well-known. So I'm putting this forward as an opportunity for council to make, to actively advocate for a better capacity, capacity building and better funding and investment of community-based mental health services, because that's where people in our community will access mental health services, is community-based.
Yep, thank you councillor Green. Councillor Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, look, it seems to me two different motions now, because the motion moved by councillor Fiona is, is talking about only the cutting fund from the federal government, you know, in this area. But the second motion, or the foreshadow motion moved by councillor Green, is talking about Australian-wide health issue. So it seems to me this is different motion, you can move it next month, quite happy to support it. But this is two different motions, thank you.
Councillor McNaul?
Thank you, and thank you everybody for the comments, and councillor Green could not agree with you more. However, I just would like to point out that I do believe these are two separate issues. I'm particularly just speaking about the cut from 20 to 10 sessions, the advocacy surrounding that, and particularly at this time when we know that the federal government is looking at Medicare in, on Friday, I believe I heard on the radio this morning. So it's an opportune time to move forward with something like this. I would dearly love to have discussions around a motion advocating for better mental health services, having worked many, many sessions in emergency departments where a lot of presentation is not medical but rather mental health-related. I'm very aware that there are shortcomings and I would like to, I don't want to rush advocacy on that, I want to, I will be the strongest supporter of advocacy for mental health services for all of our community. I just don't think that these are the same thing and I don't want to rush that, and I would like to keep them separated as, as separate issues.
So I think, so you don't, you don't want to accept it necessarily as part of your motion?
No, not at this point, but I'm, no, I don't want to accept it into the same motion, but I'm happy to have separate motions. I just want some time to consider a separate motion if we're going to move that way.
Well, currently the wait time at Liverpool Women's Health Centre for, for women for counselling, psychological counselling is six months. And in conversations that I've had over this past week with other services, to get low-income women into, with their mental health plan to access psychological service, the wait time is extensive.
Well, I'm, councillor Green, I'm happy if you want to move that as urgency motion, I'm happy to accept it as an urgency motion, so it's its own standalone, and that way it's clearer and...
I would be happy to do that because, and I agree that the federal government is actually, had, they had their earlier meeting this week with a round table, and they were looking at lived experience driving the mental health issue. And I would even go so far as to say, let us put our hand up to be a pilot, to build building capacity and having consumer there.
So just, just from a procedural point of view, so you're moving that as an urgency motion?
Yes, I will.
Yeah, cool. And it's urgent because?
Because the round table is happening and...
Very soon.
Very soon.
Cool, I accept that as urgency.
I'm happy to second that if we, but can we have, oh, sorry, can we have a break though to read through? Can we have a few minutes?
You want to read through that, yeah? No worries.
Yeah, I'm happy to move ahead my motion if we're happy to vote on that, but I'd like a few minutes to read through this, just to...
The urgency motion has to take precedence, so even though we're still going through that. But we can, if you want, just to, if you want to have a read of it for a bit?
Just a couple of minutes.
All right, so I think, I think it's been spoken for, so have a read of it and then we'll put it in a minute or two.
Does the urgency motion need a mover and a second?
Yep, councillor Green, second to councillor McNaul.
That's the motion.
Oh, you second it, councillor Caliander.
That's the motion. Question?
The urgency. Yeah, the foreshadows.
I understand that, but the ruling, your ruling that it is an urgency motion, does it need a mover and a second, a simple question?
No, I determine urgency as the chair, under the code of meeting, and then, so now I, I'm happy to, I put it now towards council to decide whether the motion is...
Okay, as long as you're sure that's the way it is.
Ma'am, am I okay to speak on, on the motion as well?
Just one second, you can. I think if, just wait a second, because there was a lot, very detailed information at councillor Green, which I know you're, both of you probably are very, are very good at it, so I think it, just give councillors a moment just to read it, if you can.
Mr Mayor, what is, why it's urgent now?
It's urgent because there's a meeting that's happening, a round table discussion that's happening within different levels of government very soon, so...
When, when?
This week.
This week?
This week. So it's urgent, so it's all right, give it a moment. Can you pull that back up on the screen, please? The, oh, it's there, yeah, thank you. All right.
I'm happy to take that into my motion, if that's, if we haven't gone too far down that path.
Kind of have.
That's fine, let's, let's go.
Let's keep them two separate things. All right, do you want to speak forward, do you want to put it?
Yeah, can I speak very briefly forward? And I will speak briefly because from my reading of the room, it seems that there is broad support for this. This is actually quite important because I think for a community like ours, we have to understand that mainstream mental health services are not accessible to everyone. There are some incredibly significant barriers to entry. Some of them include awareness of the, the GP system and awareness of how to negotiate the GP system. There, there are language, there are language barriers, there are cultural barriers, and there are issues around... and there are issues around, um, you know, safety in practice. And we know that the, the more that this missing middle goes unfunded, it puts increasing pressure on um our acute services. And we know um over the last five years, Liverpool and Campbelltown emergency, emergency rooms have been, you know, frequently in the top three in terms of um presentations related to mental health. And the only way we get that down is by funding community health services that actually acknowledge the, the very diverse needs within our community. And the Medicare system doesn't quite go far enough in that regard. So whilst I don't disagree that we really need, um, you know, some people need to access those extra Medicare sessions, um, we also really need to put some attention into our community-based medic- mental health services in order to make that impact. Thanks.
Can I ask who's, who, the, in point two of the motion, uh, to the mover and seconder, it talks about the report, the mental health services accessibility report of the University of Sydney, Western in Ullongong. Have, have you read that report? Yep, cool. And is that, so is the, the points that you're referring to? Sorry, can you put your microphone?
Very sorry. Uh, yes, I have. And those uh two uh points, uh, they come from the concluding points of that, that hundred and thirty-one page report, that this is what is needed in South West Sydney, um, you know, to have better integrated mental health services. And I guess that's where, like, integration is, is where a lot of our social services are going and mental health has been left behind, as um our CEO would know. This would be a great opportunity to have, you know, to, to um begin that journey of integrated mental health services in Liverpool.
Yep, cool, wonderful. All right, so we'll, we don't, not many of us have read the report, but it's good that we'll take, we'll take, we have confidence.
I'm happy to, to forward the report through to everyone.
It's good, I'm sure for those around, that's good.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll put the urgency motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it unanimous. So we'll go back to the motion, the norm. Um, the norm is there. Any, do you want to speak, uh, write a reply, councillor McNair?
No, I think I've said enough.
Wonderful. All right, all good. Uh, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it unanimous. We've got three, two items, three items, four items left.
And don't forget, we're going back, councillor.
So next item is conf zero one, page eighty-seven, recommendation on one eighty-eight.
Don't forget, we've got to do the community.
Oh, the committees. Oh, yeah, well, we'll go for a break then. All right, now if we're going to the committees, um, I'll call a recess to uh three thirty-five. Thank you, everyone. Uh, resumed. Next item is conf zero one, page one eighty-seven, recommendation on page one eighty-eight. Move Deputy Mayor, seconded, councillor Moon, any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is conf zero two, page one ninety-three, recommendation on page one ninety-three, move Deputy Mayor, seconded, councillor Moon, any discussion? So I couns- I'll put the motion.
Just one question.
Yes, sorry.
Uh, y- y- you know the for, the uh, the money that we're going for, has that been put into our financial accounts, into our uh for- forecasting of our financial accounts? And is it in the uh, the amount that we're going to be paying off by, to bring us back to a balanced budget? Or is it in the amount that is a generational debt? Over.
Through the CEO, uh, this money is budgeted, it's in the long-term financial plan and it's in the budget that works have already been undertaken and the line was approved.
I realise that.
We're just processing it now. Yes, it's budgeted for.
It's budgeted for, so it will be either in that uh, that, that smaller amount that we're going to pay off in a um, to bring us back to a balanced budget, right? We've been talking about that in our budget review meetings. Or it is either in the, the budget, which is our long-term forecast, where we have got a generational debt, but we've got plans of how to play it up. Wondering where it is.
Again, councillor, it's, it's in the budget that was for that, for those works.
Yeah.
So.
I'll bring it up in some budget.
Yep, it's all there. It's, it's definitely in there. We've had presentations, it's in there, but it, great. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it unanimous. No, we're not, just, we're not, not yet, no, 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 not yet. We'll now do, one, pardon? Yeah, yeah, we're not, we'll do the committees now before we walk out. How exciting. If I can guess, the committees be brought up? All right, lovely. Uh, we have councillor Green for the Aboriginal Conservative Committee on the quarterly first Thursday, six to eight P M. Anybody else? All right, councillor Green it is. Thank you, councillor. Congratulations. Pointed. Um, Eric? What do we have? Yep, uh.
The civic advisory is normally the mayor plus all ma-
No, no, we have, we're not, we have, we're doing Eric now at the moment.
Oh, Eric.
Eric.
I would like to be on that committee.
Council's going to deputy mayor and one councillor. So uh, deputy mayor and councillor Rhodes.
Mr. Mayor, just a question in regard of the deputy mayor one. Can I delegate? Any other councillor as a deputy mayor?
I don't think that is possible.
No, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't um-
Just in case, I can't make it.
Is the deputy mayor actually the chair or is the, no, the chair is?
The deputy mayor is the chair of that, that meeting.
Isn't it, um?
Mr. Mayor, just, yeah, we have an issue now. It seems to me the mayor can chair any committee.
Except for Eric.
He's not permitted on Eric.
Except for Eric. Why except for Eric?
I don't know, it's confidential or something.
Well, I can ask these questions. Why except for Eric?
It's in legislation or it's in the guidelines.
Of Eric.
Because the cha- the charter of Eric is a um, comes from um, huh? Yeah, legislat- legislatively prescribed.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah. But technically, if the mayor is chair, if it's not the mayor, it's a point.
The committee, the mayor and deputy mayor can chair the committees?
The mayor or, or the representative.
Or one of the representative, anyone.
Technically, we got to go to every charter.
Thank you.
Councillor, did you want to stay on that or are you happy to go? If you want to stay on it, then we'll just add a number, but.
I don't think you can.
We don't think we can?
Been through it before.
Cool. I'm sure you'll still attend anyway. Great. Okay, next one, civic advisory.
Uh, that is the mayor and all representatives.
Great. Move on. Next one, companion, companion animal.
That's the mayor and all representatives.
Yeah, I will um not be on that committee, if that's all right.
Well, then I have been chairing that meeting, so I'd ask-
Councillor Rhodes. Anyone else? Gone once, gone twice. Poor little animals. No? No one? Okay, councillor Rhodes it is with a vacancy.
At least we won't have to worry about people not attending.
Um, where are we going up? What's that one? Uh, communal, uh, mayor and all councils, yep. Next one, thank you.
Oh.
District forums. District forums. Councillor McNair?
I, I would like to have the opportunity to chair the Eastern District Forum if that's appropriate, please.
Who's in now? Councillor Haggerty?
The Eastern District is me.
Oh, councillor.
Yes, I will step down to allow her to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to?
Well, all, all councillors can attend.
To stay?
Absolutely.
Two one six eight, yep. Councillor Green, two one six eight. Councillor Moon? What do you, what do you, what, the um? Two one six eight? Want to go two one six eight? Okay, so I have a couple there. Um, councillor, um, uh, the new, new, uh, new release?
Look, I'm happy to stay as the chair for now, but we might need to look at that at some point in the future. There you go. Put councillor Hall as my, yeah.
Yeah, um. The um rule? Councillor Hall?
Uh, I'd like, no, that's okay. Yep.
Yep. I, I, councillor Green and ca- huh? Sorry, can you put your, um, I'm just, I was just about to ask if they're happy to co-chair and work with each other and? Yeah? Yep, great. Lovely. Excellent. Let's go. All right, next one? Environmental Advisory Committee.
I would like to go on to that committee as well, to be able to vote. I turn up, but I can't vote at the moment.
I'm happy to stay as chair. I know that there's a few representatives on there.
I'm sure it doesn't make much of, just. Yep, next one?
Uh, the intermodal committee, I'm happy.
Heritage, well, and heritage, sorry.
Uh, I would like to go on to that committee.
Yep. Next one, intermodal?
I'm happy to stay.
I'll stay.
Next one? Access Committee, councillor Hall.
I attend that meeting, so put me down as well.
Yep. Next one, Sports Committee? Councillor Goodman? Councillor Moon? Next one? Tourism and CBD Committee.
Yes, I'd like to remain on that position. Thanks.
I'm happy to stay.
Yeah, I can leave.
Nana, he's leaving, Nana, doesn't want to be on. Something a bit exciting. All right.
I'll, I'll go off as well with councillor Goodman. Oh, you, yeah, as is.
Next one, Youth Council?
Happy to stay.
I'll, I'll leave that one. I'm now in my forties and, you know, probably can't.
If you're too old, I'm quite.
Can I, can I connect with the youth anymore? Yep. Next one?
Well, we've got the Wesrock Committee, please.
Civic Risk Committee.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to let someone else.
I, I turn up to it.
What's that? Sorry, councillor?
Yes, I'll do it.
Yep, I'll stay on it then. The G R triple C.
The Georgia's Ru- I'm happy to stay on that.
Councillor McNair? Councillor Hall? Access Committee, uh, Traffic Committee?
Yes, I will stay on that.
I'd like to go on that committee, please.
Cool. Councillor Rhodes and councillor Goodman? McFire, uh, McFire, Macarthur Bushfire Committee, count?
We're going back to the Liverpool Pedest- I thought we changed that back to the Traffic Committee. The title.
We did.
This is an old report. Remember, the staff were just founded for us to help us do this, so. Um, Macarthur Bushfire Committee, councillor Hall? Uh, Library Committee? New South Wales Metropolitan Library Association? Councillor Green?
Given she's reading a hundred and thirty-one page reports, I'm sure.
What's that?
She's, she's been reading a hundred and thirty-one page reports, so I'm sure she'd love to be on the library committee.
Next item, next one, please, thank you. Uh, the Sydney Planning Panel, I'm happy to continue on there.
Well, I would like to go on to that.
I'd like to go on to that as well.
Are you serious enough?
There's requirements, yes. There are, like, the panel members need a certain level of, of skill. Um, not saying that the two, that is, but I just, I'm just letting the councillors know that there are, uh-
I'm a previous person on that panel.
Oh, so very skilled, but yeah, just.
What, what kind of skill?
I can't remember. What does it say?
We can only have two.
I'll let it go for councillor Rhodes. Keep it in mind.
South West Academy of Sports.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, going back to the previous one.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yep, my apologies.
Look, we have some major problems with that, as you know, people attending that Western City planning one. Can we make sure that we've got some alternatives on there? Because the, the chair of the meeting, he doesn't like the idea when there's only four instead of five. Could we make sure that we've got alternatives on the greatest, on the city?
What do we, when do we, um?
Quite often, we've had only three people, uh, four people on there out of the five and he's not happy because council, we need to have two external in, like, council representatives on that. Unfortunately, you're not always available.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I've, yeah, there's been some conflict.
Mayor, in the past, one of the delegates to the committee never show up. So it became only four members. So just in case, there is really important decisions to be taken. So two and two, you can't make any decision.
Cool, we'll do.
This is one. And secondly, secondly, any delegate on this committee has to show his, his or her qualification to the Department of Planning to be appointed on the committee. So if someone hasn't got the qualification, don't bother put his name or her name on.
So we'll get two alternates. Councillor Hall, you want to be an alternate? Yep. Anyone else alternate?
Who else? It's councillor Haggerty was on it. Can't do it.
Councillor Moon or the councillor McNair? No?
Is the meeting during the day? It's during the day, isn't it?
Yes. Maybe it's during the day? Hmm? Expertise, yes. All right, well, we have one alternate then. Does councillor Goodman want to go on it or? No, cool. Um. South West Academy of Sports, councillor Caliendo.
I'll put myself down as an alternate. If she gets stuck.
Wesrock?
So I would like to maintain my position. Now, this person must have a um director's number.
Can I ask what time the meeting is?
Yep, the meetings are, I can tell you actually the days as well. Um, the next meeting is on the twenty-third of February at the Crown Plaza, Hawkesbury, from six to eight P M. There's a Zoom meeting on the twentieth of April, seven to eight.
Okay, as, as long as it's uh six or later, I'm happy to put my-
They all start six.
Myself forward.
Yep, next one? And that's it? That's it? Lovely.
Uh, what, we, I know, I know we skipped presentations and, but while we're on the topic of Wesrock, it's come to my attention that Wesrock is fifty years old.
Happy birthday.
And I think council should send them a, a birthday cake or a card or something. But it's a, it's a momentous achievement uh, and has led the way in terms of, you know, joint organisations, they're now mandatory, but Wesrock was one of the first and it's done some fantastic work. And I think the mayor, you should uh write them a letter congratulating them.
They, they have a meeting with the CEO next week, so we, hand-deliver it.
I'll, I'll meet with them next week.
You, you've got a week to bake that cake.
A bir- no, a birthday card should suffice, you know, I mean, a happy, a birthday, um, yeah, a birthday card.
I think they prefer a cheque, but I'm happy to- I think they prefer a cheque, but I'm happy to give them a card instead.
How about a refund?
Yeah, okay.
Only, only a letter or land on cake as well.
And councillor, I'll most shortly send them your, your message to them, I have an executive meeting tomorrow with them, so I'll send that message through to them.
Fantastic, thank you.
Cool, all right, I'll put that motion seconded. Councillor Rhodes, all those in favour? Against, declare it carried. So now, we have the legal affairs report. We'll start with conf 03, page 225.
Happy to move that.
Moved. Seconded, move councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor McNamara, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour? Against, declare it carried. I'm now leaving, and before I leave, the, we don't have a deputy mayor, we have to appoint someone to chair the meeting for the last item. Move councillor McNamara?
I move that councillor Ali Khanip chair the meeting.
You can do it from down there if you want.
Yeah.
All right, all right.
I second that.
None, all right, thank you. All those in favour? Against, declare it carried.
I'll move, oh, we're waiting for him to leave. Well, I'll, I'll move that way.
Oh, who's seconded?
I'll second it.
Yeah? Two, seconded. Means all, you're the lastly? Yeah, all right. Thank you.
You're going to declare the meeting closed at 3.56?
I declare the meeting closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.